Good evening. I will call the meeting to order at this time. If you will, please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. This time I'll ask Councilman Scott if he will lead us in the invocation, please.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come tonight, Lord, to do business in a community that we're so proud to serve in, Lord. We're proud of our families that live here, people that work here, and those that pass through daily. Lord, we pray that you'll... Special prayer over this meeting, Lord, that we'll be able to conduct business that makes you proud and honored in serving the people the best that we can. Father, we pray that you'll bless us during this month as we celebrate black heritage in our community, in our state, and our nation, Father. And I pray, Lord, any soul that has bias in them that you would take it away because it's unfair. We pray all this in your holy name, Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, gentlemen, I have the agenda in front of me. There are a few known changes to the agenda. One being add to consent agenda, item number five, consideration and request for approval to appoint Elizabeth Baker to serve as first term on the Appearance Commission and also on the Historic Properties Commission. Then also on the consent agenda, item number six, consideration and request for approval to appoint Jan Branch and Brittany Lucas to the Downtown Smithfield Development Corporation's Board of Directors by adopting Resolution Number 720. And then the final, we already have a closed session on, but we also need to add Section A5 as part of the statute to that closed session as well. Are there any other changes or additions to the agenda? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as amended, Mr. Rare.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Repose? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, our first item this evening is a presentation. It's a proclamation for declaring February as All in Red Month. So as many of you know, I lost my mother in 2022 to complications from heart disease. And she suffered many years and battled that very dreadful disease. So this month, in cooperation with Johnston Health, the Town of Smithfield is helping to publicize the All in Red Month to help raise awareness for heart disease. Heart disease is the number one killer of people in Johnston County as well as throughout North Carolina and the United States. So I think it's only appropriate that we help try to raise awareness to this god-awful disease. I can say Travis, you and your staff and the Smithfield Fire Department, the many times that you showed up at my parents' house in the last five to six years, right, just when she got to the point where she could not breathe. And Travis, I know you were there several times and greatly appreciate all those efforts. But this proclamation is designating February as All in Red Month in the Town of Smithfield. So if you will, please bear with me, and I will just read the proclamation. Whereas the well-being of our community is of paramount importance and maintaining excellent health among our citizens is a top priority. February marks the one month countywide heart health awareness campaign entitled All in Red, presented by Johnston Health and organized by the Johnston Health Foundation. And whereas in the United States, North Carolina, and Johnston County, heart disease is the leading cause of death among men and women. Whereas heart disease and stroke ranks among the top five health priorities in Johnston County per the 2019 Johnston County Community Health Needs Assessment Implementation Plan. And whereas per the Center of Disease Control and Prevention, about 80% of deaths from premature heart disease and stroke could be prevented by changes in physical activity, diet, education, and management of common medical conditions. And whereas All in Red is an opportunity to increase heart health awareness while addressing the growing needs of local heart patients. And whereas the All in Red campaign invites all Johnston County residents, business owners, and visitors to participate in this initiative by wearing red in the month of February. National Wear Red Day, which is February the 3rd, and/or running a red promo or fundraiser in February. And whereas the financial challenges of a heart patient are enormous, all funds raised within this campaign period will benefit local heart patients through the Johnston Health Foundation's Heart Health Fund. And whereas on this day, we recognize heart health disease and stroke survivors, those battling disease, their families, who are their source of love and encouragement, and applaud the efforts of our medical professionals who provide quality care. Now therefore, I, Andy Moore, the mayor of the Town of Smithfield, along with the town council, hereby proclaim February 2023 as All in Red Month and encourage businesses, industries, and citizens in the community to support and participate in this event. Thank you very much. If anyone would like to donate to this campaign, you can get in touch with me. You can make checks out to the Johnston County Health Foundation. But also, if you enter lobby, I would love more than anything to see the hearts covered the hallway. So I would ask our staff, you can ask any one of our staff members. We have little hearts here. You can come in and you can donate $5. Dollar, whatever you want to donate, right? All the money that we raise here at the town will go directly to that fund. But I would love to see our hallway just filled with those red hearts. There are already lots of them out there. But we have the entire month to fill that entire hallway. So if you have a minute or two, just stop by Town Hall and see one of the town staff, and they can certainly help you with that. Or again, you can make checks to the Johnston County Health Foundation. You can drop it off here. I'll be glad to turn it in. Mayor Jeff Holt from the Town of Pine Level is the chairperson of the committee this year, and he's doing an excellent job of helping to promote it as well. So thank you very much. All right, we will now move on to our first public hearing. This public hearing, it is not a quasi-judicial hearing, so there's no need for anyone to be sworn in at this time. But the public hearing is ZA-22-05, Mr. William R. Andrews. The applicant is requesting an amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance, Articul6, Table 6.6, Table of Uses and Activities to allow accessory dwelling units in the R-20A zoning district with supplementary standards. Article 7, Section 7.3, to add supplementary standards for accessory dwelling units. And Article 11, Section 8.3, adding a definition of an ADU or accessory dwelling unit. This time I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
I make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Repose? Motion carries. Stephen, I turn it over to you, sir.
Thank you. So an overview to this issue. Mr. Andrews is the applicant. He was requesting a UDO amendment at this time so he can obtain a permit to complete the construction of an accessory dwelling unit, which is in his barn on his property. His interest is having his daughter live there. The construction had begun some time ago in the past, and now when he went to make an application, he found out we don't allow accessory dwelling units. Maybe they had in the past, not sure. His permit was rejected because they're not permitted within the town's jurisdiction. So just as a backup here, in 2020, when the town plan was approved, there was a recommendation in the draft town plan for ADUs or accessory dwelling units, which is kind of a trend in the planning world right now because of affordability issues in housing. As you probably know, the National Planning Association is advocating for, you know, more housing options and affordability. This particular recommendation was pulled from the comp plan at that time. And Objective 5 of this draft said to encourage a mix of housing types inside the town limits to allow accessory dwellings meeting a performance-based criteria. So at the request of this applicant, that is what we're actually proposing. So this is different than the deleted policy in that it would be only allowed in the R-20A district and only on parcels greater than two acres. Most of these are located outside of the town's corporate limits in the ETJ. That's where most of our rural zoning exists. There is some rural zoning within the corporate limits. Having ADUs or accessory dwelling units on larger rural lots would allow property owners to enjoy greater utility of their properties without negatively impacting neighbors while providing needed housing. In the case of Mr. Andrews, it provides him an opportunity to provide needed housing for his daughter, who then can help care for he and his wife. Accessory dwelling units, I'd already mentioned this, they are being promoted for multiple reasons. Johnston County does not allow accessory dwelling units throughout the county. It's not allowed. This is a map showing the areas in green are the R-20A district. And you can see some of the properties are quite large in that map. This is a map that more clearly shows in larger scale the downtown, or sorry, the town borders and the green areas that exist within it. A good amount of that area is a floodplain, but you can see there are some other areas, like east of 95, large areas of R-20A, and a few pockets of town land within that. So this is the proposed amendment. It would be adding an accessory dwelling unit line to the table of uses with the permitted standards under the R-20A category and then referencing Section 7.3, which is the accessory, sorry, with the supplementary standard. The supplementary standard, again, would allow accessory dwelling units on lots that are two or more acres in size that have adequate sewer or adequately sized and functioning septic systems for the use. The accessory dwelling unit has to be located on the same lot as the principal dwelling and meet both of the following. The gross floor area of the accessory dwelling shall be less than the gross area of the principal dwelling. So it's clearly accessory. The accessory dwelling unit, I was just going to say ADUs, it's easier to say, shall be affixed to or constructed on a permanent foundation and shall not be a manufactured home or movable structure, and it will need to meet NC Building Code requirements. There shall be no more than one ADU on the same lot as the principal dwelling. The ADU shall be accessed by a lockable external entrance. ADU shall not be transferred apart from its principal dwelling unit, so it stays with that lot. The ADUs shall have dedicated paid parking in accordance with the parking standards of the code. And the ADU shall have, I'm sorry, that's a repeat, my apologies. And ADUs, this is an add-on. ADUs shall not have utility meters separate from the principal dwelling unit. That is a policy the town generally has, is each lot has one utility service. And then we're adding accessory dwelling unit definition in the appendix. So staff believes this is consistent with the Comprehensive Growth Plan as amended if this goes through, because that was taken out of the comp plan and that the amendment is reasonable in the public interest. So staff and the planning board recommend approval with a system statement declaring it consistent with the growth management plan, and it's reasonable in the public interest. Recommended motion. Any questions?
Any questions for planning director at this time?
Mayor, I have a couple of comments. Mr. Wensman, can you go back to the one with the recommendations? I believe you had about four bullet points there.
The, okay.
Utilities, the paving and such.
You're talking about this? No, go forward.
Yeah, if you could bring that one up. Being familiar with some of the territory out there, a lot of these people perhaps do not have parking. And you mentioned along it was in accordance with what their standard, but that says parking. Is that paved, dedicated paved? Does that mean they're gonna have to pave the parking? How did y'all discuss that?
It's just parked on a driveway.
Okay. In other words, you want dedicated parking on a driveway. It doesn't necessarily have to be paved driveway. It could be gravel.
Yeah.
Okay.
For residential standards, gravel's permissible.
Right. I know there's many people that have gravel driveways in that community, so I was just curious. Thank you.
Yep.
So then should the term paved be in there? That's my question. Because paved does not gravel, is it? I mean, instead of gravel lot, a paved lot.
It's consistent with our ordinance, so it refers to our parking ordinance.
Okay.
Mr. Wensman, where it says the 7.3, 7.3.3.1, the size of it, is it shall not exceed or shall be less than the total of the main house?
Yeah.
So if somebody has a 3,000 square foot house, can they put a 2,900 square foot ADU up?
That would be permissible. It's just got to be smaller than the principal structure.
Okay. That'd be, I mean, that's the only concern I have. I mean, I think it's a great idea, a great use of land, makes a lot of sense. Is it going to open it up to somebody building two houses on a lot effectively? Having that, maybe we should put a size restriction on it. A specific one-half of the house or one-quarter of the house. Because when it's small like this, I mean, I'm all for it, but we open ourselves up to having two houses on a lot.
Right. Well, I mean, we could put a limit on the size. That was not something that we really talked about.
Yeah.
You know, it could be...
That's a good idea.
I don't know. Would it be a square footage limit or a percentage limit?
I'd say a percentage of square footage.
Why don't you put a 1,200-foot, square-foot cap?
Or square footage on the actual, a high end on a, I mean...
The town attorney suggests a maximum 1,200 square foot.
Yeah.
Can add that as a...
How does this differ from a finished-in-garage with upstairs living? Is that considered the same thing?
Yeah.
So would the square footage of the, perhaps it should say finished square footage?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we just add to that statement with a maximum finished square footage of 12,000 square feet. Or 1,200, 1,200, excuse me.
So is this structure already built in this good case?
It's an, this particular applicant, he has a garage that has a partly finished apartment in the second floor, and he wanted to finish it per code and was not allowed to.
Okay.
So we don't know the real history of how it got there in the first place, but it happened a long time ago.
Yeah, yeah, no, I just, my question was going to be, or my statement is, if it's not really going to hold anything up, we could, right, we could always go back and research the square footage issue.
Yeah.
1,200 square feet is a house.
Yeah.
I mean, there are a lot of 1,200-square-foot homes in Smithfield, right? So I'm not sure, you know what I mean? I don't know what, I don't know what the magical number is, but I think it's a very good point, right? That you don't want two homes.
Because on a half-acre lot, you could put two, probably 2,500-square-foot homes on there.
I mean, it's a very good point.
Very easily.
Do you know the size of his garage, the building that he's planning on building?
I do not have that information. Although I'm not sure if the applicant is here tonight.
Are they here?
Because my issue would be that, you know, because we can always set a low number, and then if, you know, if it meets his needs, because he's the only one that's asked. And if somebody else wants one that's bigger, then we worry about it as a bigger number. Because at this point, I mean, time, what would be the size that we would feel acceptable with? I mean, that would be my question. You know, I mean, it's only, it should only be like a mother-in-law suite or something like that. It's not intended to be another house dwelling. So, you know, you're looking at relatively small size. To his point, 1,200, 1,200 square feet, some houses are not 1,200 square feet. I mean, they're not. We got some 900-square-feet houses in Smithfield.
Sure.
So...
Well, I think the other key point is, is it's clearly documented that you're not allowed to subdivide the property, and it's going to have the same utility as a property, so therefore, but still you would have duplicate structure. My concern, I think, I personally feel like a percentage would be a better research number. Because in town, you know, you're not gonna, you have very, and I know this is for R-20, but this was discussed in the UDO. And if you had a lot that was a certain size, somebody wanted to have those, which like most do, the percentage may be more appropriate. But either way, in the R-20, it seems very reasonable to make that accommodation.
I mean, you could do a percentage with a cap, a percentage with a max square footage of, let's say, 1,000 square feet, or I don't know what the magic number is, but, you know, if you have a 1,200-square-foot house and you want to do an accessory dwelling unit that is 50% of the size, if that was the requirement, that's a pretty small unit, 600 square feet. So maybe you're looking at 75% of the principal structure to a max of...
1,200 square feet.
1,200 square feet.
Yes, that sounds better.
75% of the principal structure with a max of 1,200 square feet.
Now, is, Mr. Wensman, just another question. We're talking about an accessory dwelling unit. We really haven't, and I don't think we need to get in the weeds on it, but perhaps they wanted to have a pool house and a storage building. Would it need to be taken into consideration, that type of stuff? Or would this fall in that category in some sense?
Currently, currently, the way our code reads, we're allowed to have two accessory structures if you have a property over one acre in size in the R-20A. We already made a carve-out for that. And a pool house is an exception to that. You're allowed to have a pool house, because you're allowed to have a pool. You need to have a pool house that goes with it. So that would be even another accessory structure.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I think while we're doing this, this little off-subject, but not too much, I think that when we're exploring this, we also need to be looking at, because we only allow one structure on all of our properties, well, you know, in the Town of Smithfield, when you look at the possibility of allowing two, a lot of them already have two, changing our UDO to that, is that something that the manager, you guys, can investigate and then bring back to us as a possible change to our UDO?
Yeah, I could prepare, I could either bring it up as a topic to the planning board and see what they say before preparing an ordinance, or I could prepare an ordinance and bring it to them.
I'd just say you prefer to prepare an ordinance and move forward, because we already have, most of the people, people already have two. So the issue with that is to me that we're going to penalize, we're careful, we're penalizing the people that are following the rules, you know, and not those who already violated the rules. So I think that's something we need to look at, but I defer to you guys to decide how you want to do that. But this is not really related to this, but then it is related to the UDO, that's why I bring it up at this point.
You have a point.
I've got a question. What would happen later on down the line if his daughter didn't stay in the barn? Could he rent it out?
Absolutely.
He just said it.
Yeah.
It could.
Yeah.
Could we put restrictions on that?
There's no way to control it.
But can we put a restriction on it?
A rental?
Looking at...
Yeah, I was going to say, I'm thinking people...
It's all over Raleigh, I mean, in the best sections of town. What does this American Planning Institute recommend? Because these small houses are, you know, in the more urban areas, homelessness is a problem if you're allowing, encouraging these things.
Well, the American Planning Association has been insupportive and probably lobbying to, to allow accessory dwelling units everywhere. And they're manufactured homes, they're in favor of those too. They're in favor of tiny homes, which is an RV. I mean, they're kind of promoting the full spectrum of housing options and sizes just to address the homelessness crisis and affordability issues.
I went to a subdivision in Clayton, excuse me, Golsburg, outside of Golsburg, and had one room, if you can believe that, very nice little house. Shower, bathroom, kitchen, one bedroom and a TV. And I suppose, I don't want to live like that, but I mean, that person was living warm and clean and healthy and happy.
Mayor, I have one other concern with this. Again, I support the issue and understand, but I do think that there needs to be some clarification. This is a permanent structure, because if not, it could be easily interpreted, you know, putting the RV in the backyard and stuff. And the other thing, I understand council's concern, but we really need to, if, obviously, this is for R-20 and getting a little bit off-topic. But again, I understand the initiative, but we have had discussion about the short-term rental problems in other areas and was fearing that coming here in regards to the Airbnb and some concerns with that. So I do think that's something that needs to be visited, but I don't think it's going to affect this specific case. But I understand that this is going to change the R-20 category.
To be fair, I mean, there's really no way to police whether or not, I mean, whether it's rental or ownership, our rules don't stipulate that. Technically, Airbnbs are illegal because they're not in our table of uses. The short-term rentals are not allowed, but they're all over the place, and they're really difficult to control. So this could easily, down the road, maybe not this gentleman, he sells the house in 10 years, someone else buys and says, "Great, I got an Airbnb in the backyard." So it's a reality. We have to be prepared for it.
But I do think, forget the clerk, the screen went off, but somewhere it needs to say permanent. I don't want to pull an old-school bus in the backyard or camper or something.
It does say no manufactured homes as a secondary, as an accessory dwelling unit, and has to be meeting North Carolina Building Code. So that is the protection.
Okay.
Stephen, I did have just one question relating to this. The issue about it has to be on the primary lot, cannot be so divided off. Recently, the, and I realize the zoning's different, but people get rezoned all the time. The Old Harbor location had two properties on it, and that was recently split. So again, this is a slightly different situation, but looking forward, if this was a completely separate house, we'll call it, the man sells the house, the next owner comes before, he had nothing to do with it and decides he wants to sell the second residence, and will come before us to split the lot. That's what happened with the Old Harbor facility.
I think at that point, if it meets all the standards and it is the principal structure, that's possible. Generally, the idea is you don't want something that is an accessory structure and reads as an accessory structure being the principal structure. You raise a good point, though. I mean, R-20A, you can have a lot smaller lots than five acres. I think he has five acres on his property. I'm not sure. But in his case, he can't split the property anyway, but that's not going to be the case for others.
I'm saying, if he sells the entire property to someone else.
Okay, the problem is, the utilities have to be tied to one owner. So they can't split the property unless they come back and put in separate utilities.
Right.
Because it's all under, thus the requirement here, has to be the same utilities. So it's one property owner. That's why it's set up that way. So they can't split the properties.
But upon selling it, they could apply for a new TAP and run new lines to the building and essentially create a new principal structure, which maybe isn't a bad thing, but we're making it so it's tied to the principal unit if it's an ADU. So I guess we can't control what we can't control. So I guess we can't control what we can't control. If, if a legitimate lot split occurs in the R twenty A and they want to turn that into a principal structure or build a new principal structure and have that be on that lot as the secondary structure, they would have to bring in new utilities and address all the code issues, and maybe that's fine. I guess I wouldn't, it's not creating an issue that wouldn't be there today if they had to construct new. But the idea is to make this A D U, while it's with this lot, have it be subservient to the principal structure so that there's control. So, so you don't have a rental unit that's kind of out of the control of the principal structure.
Any other questions, comments for Stephen at this time? Anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this matter? If you will, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Not seeing anyone. There.
Sure. I didn't think about this when we were going through it earlier, but through this conversation, is there anything in here that limits, that you can only have one accessory dwelling unit instead of two or three in this district now? If you change the verbiage this way?
This is the, this is one of two accessory dwellings, accessory structures that are allowed on the lot.
I didn't see that verbiage anymore.
No, it's in our ordinance, you're allowed two accessory structures. This would still be an accessory structure, it's one of the two. If you have an, if you have this much land.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions for Stephen?
Make sure I clear, clear, clear on what Mr. Scott was saying. So could you have two livable A D Us on one?
It's a good question.
Is that?
That was your question.
Yeah, we should probably add it.
One livable.
One, we should probably add a one to that, one A D U.
Two.
Accessory.
Accessories.
Right.
Sorry, there actually is a line for that in the, in the supplementary standards. Thank you, Shannon. Yep, that was one of the conditions.
No more than two accessory units, no more than one.
Only one can be an A D U.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. There are no further questions, I'll entertain a motion in a second to close the public hearing.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, it was a good discussion.
Pleasure of the council.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve zoning text amendment Z A two-two-oh-five, finding the amendment consistent with the Town of Smithfield comprehensive growth management plan and other adopted plans in that the amendment is reasonable and in public interest.
Do we need to add the?
And any additional modifications that was suggested?
Is that clear as to what was added?
Yeah, it was seven.
Could just repeat that for part of the motion.
At the end of seven-three-three-one, add, um, the accessory dwelling unit be no greater than seventy-five percent size of the principal structure with a max of twelve hundred square feet.
Right.
Was that the only other, that was the only condition, right? Okay.
No, there was additional conditions. There's additional conditions.
The red, the one in red about utilities?
Well, all the ones about making sure that it has a foundation and.
That was all, that was part of it. The only addition was that A D Us not have utility meters separate from the principal dwelling.
Okay. So that's included in there?
That's included.
Okay. Right, is that agreeable to you, Mr. Barber?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I have a motion, do I have a second on that?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on now to our next public hearing. This also is not a quasi judicial hearing, so no need for anyone to be sworn in on this one either. This is A N X dash twenty-three dash zero-one, Town of Smithfield. In accordance with North Carolina General Statute one sixty-eight dash thirty-one, the Town of Smithfield is seeking to annex sixteen point two acres of land into the corporate town limits by adoption of ordinance number five sixteen. This time I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Same move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Stephen, I will turn it over to you, sir.
Sure, I was going to load up a zoning map and I also have a PDF of the property, but it doesn't seem to be supporting either in the presentation here on the, on the computer.
It's in the handout.
Yeah, you guys have it, I was going to have it for the audience. Bear with me. So the Town of Smithfield is requesting voluntary annexation of sixteen point two acres to the Town of Smithfield. The annexation is for future trail and utilities. The action needed is to hold a public hearing on the annexation, then adopt ordinance number five-one-six, extending the corporate limits. This can be done immediately or within six months of today. The recommendation is to adopt number, ordinance number five-one-six, extending the corporate limits to the Town of Smithfield. On January tenth, twenty-twenty-three, the Town Council adopted Resolution seven-one-eight, setting the date for the public hearing for tonight. This parcel, an analysis here, the parcel will allow for the extension of public utilities. The annexation will have little or no impact on police protection. The annexation was, is within the town's fire district. The annexation may require some tree or lawn mowing and maintenance from time to time from parks and/or public works. There's no development proposed, so the annexation should have no impact on code enforcement. And the annexation will allow for a future public trail, which will be maintained by the Parks Department. So with that, staff is recommending approval.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for, for Stephen? Seeing any comments, anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this matter? Please come forward at this time. Not seeing anything. There are no questions, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's a pleasure, council.
May I, I recommend we adopt ordinance number five-one-six, extending the corporate limits of the Town of Smithfield.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll move on to citizens' comments. If anyone is wishing to speak during citizen's comments, I'll ask you to come forward. Please state your name and address for the record, and I will ask that you limit your comments to three minutes, please. Anyone wishing to speak? Yeah, right here, mm-hmm.
Councilman, thank you very much for your contributions. Approximately a decade ago, I think, Mayor Moore, you were the only one who heard a presentation by myself. I think concerning the backyard chickens. Something that we were attempting to, for the place, I'm not going to rehash the benefits of that particular presentation. At that time, the council decided not to approve such an ordinance. However, that, at that time, the cost of a dozen eggs was about a dollar seventy-seven, now it's over five dollars. I'd like to reconsider that, and I just wanted to read through the town that currently do have such ordinances and focus in particular on the Clayton ordinance that was passed last December, so, twenty-one. Apex, Asheville, Charlotte, Durham, Bayville, Hickory, High Point, Morrisville, Wake Forest, Wilmington, Winston-Salem, Cary, and Clayton all have ordinances which do allow an individual within the city limits of those cities to have chickens in their backyard. The Town of Clayton passed the ordinance, like I mentioned, in December of twenty-twenty-one. And I'd like to read what they passed that time. It shall be unlawful for any person to keep or maintain barrel poultry within the Town of Clayton, except chickens may be kept with no permit requirement, subject to the following conditions. First, roosters are prohibited. Second, no more than ten chickens may be kept on any individual lot or lots owned by the same person or entity, provided the property contains no less than six thousand square feet. Third, the chickens must be confined, confined in a pen or chicken coop at all times. Four, any chicken pen or coop shall have a top or lid must be located at the rear of the yard shall be no less than twenty-five feet from the adjacent property line. And shall be kept in a clean sanitary and healthful condition, with all droppings and organic material to be removed and disposed of in proper manner. Five, the chickens shall not be kept for commercial purposes, such as production or eggs for sale, processing of chickens for sale. And six, the outdoor slaughter in public view of those chickens shall be prohibited. This ordinance, once again, was passed and something that sets it is in Johnston County court. I think perhaps the consideration of the Town of Smithfield might be something to put in place here. I, a decade ago, was doing this for the purpose of raising my children to see how I could also raise chickens and learn something from it. At this time, I've got only one son left. So his learning opportunities from this are, are minimal, but there might be opportunities for others. Because there is a tremendous educational opportunity besides the opportunity to raise chickens. And that's all.
Okay. Thank you. And we'll, we certainly will take that under consideration. We appreciate it. Anyone else wishing to speak?
I was gentlemen sitting, somebody said I could give a minutes, and he, he would like to speak after a minute.
Okay, all right.
Established in seventeen seventy-seven, Elizabethan Temple, nine-zero, Forchester Drive, apologize. The Town of Smithfield will celebrate its two-hundred-and-fifteenth anniversary in twenty-twenty-seven. I'm hoping that there is a huge event being planned, and it is already in the works in two, that there will be a huge turnout of people from across our state and nation. As this was a great town, union member of American Revolution Airport, our town is important in world history.
From a handwritten deed of gift by Colonel John Smith Junior that was found in the State Archives microfilm by Mrs. Becky Owens, our local genealogist, D A R member. We know that Colonel John Smith Junior's daughter married Brigadier General William Bryan, who lived across the river from Town Hall down here and down to the right of us here on a farm. Colonel Needham Bryan was the younger brother of Colonel William Bryan, who was later appointed to Brigadier General. William Bryan corresponded with former Governor Caswell in their letters in the U N C Chapel Hill library between the two men. See online, William Bryan, in parentheses, North Carolina politician, close parentheses, for more information. Our local D A R chapter is named for these three men who lived in this area of Smithfield. As some already know, Smithfield was named in honor of Colonel John Smith Junior, who bought the Smith's Ferry from his father. This is a numbered print in the back that I purchased from the Johnston County Heritage Center. Mrs. Renee K. Langdon did an oil painting based upon what Smith's Ferry might have looked like. Her rendering of Smith's Ferry depicts an eighteenth-century ferry. Renee K. Langdon is a resident of Forks, North Carolina, in Johnston County. There is a certificate of authenticity that comes with purchase of a print. I was hoping that we could contact her and ask to buy the rights to her painting, or she may just give us the rights to use her artwork. I think that's very possible, if, if the town contacts her. And then this is the book that I was referring to. Please purchase and read this book by J D Lewis of South Carolina for information about Smithfieldians, John Smith Junior, and William and Needham Bryan, entitled N C Patriots, seventeen seventy-five to seventeen eighty-three, Their Own Words, Volume Two, The Provincial and State Troops, Part One, Second Edition, on page sixty-six. See where William Bryan was promoted from Johnston County to the New Bern Brigade to lead as Brigadier General of our revolutionary local and state troops on February fifteenth, seventeen seventy-seven. I requested help from the Heritage Center and museum staff to put up for a vote one or two new houses or places to mark as historical, and preferably in East Smithfield, Belmont, any area of Smithfield, I would like to see some new places designated as historical. I was born in Smithfield myself in nineteen seventy, and I hope to do this for our town. Thank you. And there's one other thing I don't let me forget. African-American Genealogy one oh-one, a one-day class is scheduled from one to three P M. Saturday, February eighteenth, at the Johnston County Heritage Center, two forty-one East Market Street. African-American Genealogist Desi Campbell of Harnett County will teach the class in the Heritage Center's first floor reading room. To register, go to H T T P S V I T dot L Y forward slash three K X O six capital V E. That's all, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this matter? Or not on this matter, any matter? Sorry.
Any matter. Don't get me into the real, real estate and the devising of lots. That's what I do for a living. Anyway, my name's John Keely. I live at twelve oh-eight, Chestnut Drive, here in Smithfield. Reason I'm just coming up here, I did write an email to all of you, including, you know, town manager, Mr. Scott, police, police chief, and everybody else with regard to code of ordinances for the city of Smithfield. And what I believe is, a lot of violations are going on. I pointed them out before, seems nothing has gotten done at all, and they're still there. So I encourage you, what I said in my letter was, take a drive around in the evening and on the weekends. That's when you're going to see all the violations. And then the next thing would be section eight, not a section eight, but chapter eight would be the next venue that I'd look at. Is all of the complaints about things in yards and, you, you've all seen it. I just wanted to call it to your attention. That's it. Thank you all.
Absolutely, and, and thank you. And I, and I can assure you, I don't, I wouldn't say that anything was not done on the first because we did, we, we, you know, I, I know, I forwarded that and we had some discussions and, and the code enforcement did go and look at those issues now. You know, whether things can be done about certain issues. But, but I certainly understand some of your, your concerns too. I've got your last email, but haven't read through the entire thing yet. But I did receive it a few days ago as well. But it looks like some of the same things that were in the previous, I think, some, some of the same issues, but. Right. Exactly. But no, I, and I, and I appreciate it. I mean, you know, we, but that's what it's about, right? We need, we need more people that are concerned with our neighborhoods and so forth, so, so thank you. Right. Exactly. Anyone else wishing to speak during citizens' comments at this time?
One comment related, I appreciate your observation. One of the things that I, I get frustrated with is that the wheels of justice turn slow. So we have things, a lot of things that we would be surprised, that we know about, that we've reported, that's going through the process, but people's process, I mean, the, the system is, just takes a long time. I mean, we got some examples behind us that we just continue to work on. I mean, the point is, it takes time. And I know, I know our citizens are frustrated. I get frustrated, say, why can't we deal with this? And it's just going through the process, and it just takes some time. We actually have, they, the manager publishes information about, uh, uh, what's, what's being done. I mean, you know, the, by code violations, because we've asked for reports on it. And so we get report, I mean, monthly, about every two weeks, don't we? On the report, on the code violations and what's being done. First notice, second notice, letter's been sent, turned over to the attorney. So I mean, we do, I do, I can empathize with you, absolutely. It frustrates us too. How can this be? It's because the system just turns slow. Well, you can't, the law won't let you do it though, so. But anyway, I do appreciate that, because we just let you know, we do feel your pain, because we feel the same pain. It's just sometimes it takes time to get it done, but, but.
Anyone else wishing to speak during citizens' comments at this time? All right. We will move on, no business items. Or did I skip the consent agenda? Oh, I did, yep, the whole thing. Okay. Next is consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
Same move, Mayor.
Motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk, no business items. Then we'll move on to council members' comments. Just one thing that was at. council members' comments. Just one thing that was at your place this evening was an invitation, I will remind everyone that this month is Black History Month, and at your place is an invitation from Johnston Central High School, National Alumni Association. They have invited us on behalf of the Johnston Central Food Pantry, that they'll be hosting their first-ever Black History program on Saturday, February 18th, at 1:00 at the Coach Reginal Ennis Pavilion. So if anyone is around that day and in town and would like to go, we are all invited to that event. That is all that I have. Anybody else have anything, council members?
Mayor, just one quick comment. The Town of Wilson's Mills is in a state of mourning, they lost their former mayor. Mr. Philip Wright passed away. He was quite a pillar in that community. He was actually part of the recharter of that town, and he served for many years as council. May I just make sure we remember them and the family during this time?
Yes, thank you, Councilman Scott. I mentioned that as well, so thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Mr. Manager, it over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of quick things. One, the amphitheater down Smithfield Commons area is under construction, so if you get a chance, stop by there from time to time. We hope to have that new amphitheater up and constructed before summertime, so things are moving quickly down there. Also, the splash pad, which is going to be enlarged, double the size in District 1 and East Smithfield, is also going to be under construction by the end of, end of the week, early next week. So that'll finalize that project, and that should be up and operational before it gets warm enough to use it. Couple exciting things that were provided for by grants from the state, and special thanks to our legislators for providing that funding for these projects. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. All right, one other thing before, we do need to go into closed session, but one other thing I would like to mention is congratulations to the man sitting at the back, interim chief, Grady. Congratulations, sir. So Captain Grady has been promoted to interim chief while we were in our search for a permanent police chief. So thank you for stepping into that position, and good luck with everything, and hope everyone remains safe under your watch, sir. Thank you. So at this time, we do need to go into a closed session, pursue it to North Carolina General Statute 143-318, section A, 5, and 6. Have a motion to go into closed session.
Same move, Mr. Mayor.
Have a motion.
Second.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.